Well, I'm Joe Dillon. I am the moderator of this forum which is being held by the League of Women Voters of Link County. The League of Women Voters, which was founded in 1920, is a nonpartisan organization open to membership for both men and women and formed to encourage active participation in government. So I'm delighted to see you all here tonight. One of the ways that we encourage that citizen participation is through voter education. We have put on a series of candidates forums for Cedar Rapids, Marion, Hiawatha, and you are at the Hiawatha Candidates Forum. We hope this will be an opportunity for you to learn more about each of the candidates and what they can do for the city of Hiawatha. Well, I'd like you to welcome the candidates. The forum is between Jacob Bryan, Dennis Norton, Dick Olson, Amy Wickendall, and Bob Wheeler was invited but unfortunately was unable to attend this event tonight. I will start by explaining some of the procedures of the forum, and each of the candidates has received these procedures ahead of time. First of all, each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement and also two minutes for a closing statement. In between, there'll be a question and answer period. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. We'll go in a round robin type of format for both the statements and the questions and answers. If at this time you would like to ask a question, we have paper and pencils that a link member would be glad to bring to you. Just raise your hand. If you have a question you'd like to be brought up, raise your hand and a link member will collect it. The timekeepers are sitting in the first row. When there's half a minute left, the timekeeper will hold up a sign that says 30 seconds. When there's 15, when there's 15 seconds left, the timekeeper will hold up another sign that says 15 seconds. And when time is up, the timekeeper will hold up a sign that says "Stop." When you see the stop sign, I will say thank you and we'll move on to the next question or to the next statement. Candidates, of course, will confine their responses to the statements and will avoid personal attacks on each other. I'm sure that will be no problem at all. Please note the cameras at the back of the room. The forum is being recorded by Robin Clash of Neighborhood Network News, and will be available to watch on two websites. The first one is www.neighborhoodnetworknews.com, as always, Word, Neighborhood Network News, and the other is our own website, lwplinkcounty.org, for League of Women Voters Link County. We'll have a link to the Neighborhood News website. It should be available within a day. Please, at this moment, since we want to be respectful of the candidates and the questions, please turn off and put away your cell phones. If at any time during the forum you cannot hear either me or the candidates, please raise your hand or indicate that. We request that you treat all candidates fairly. The questions should be pertinent to the issues and the office that the candidate is speaking and should be, is seeking, and will be, should be addressed to all candidates. If it's addressed to just one candidate, we'll try to rewrite it so that it can be addressed to all candidates. I will ask questions first where there are several questions on a topic, and then I'll get to the questions for which there may be only one person seeking the answer. Because of the length of the forum, we may not get to all of your questions. If we don't at the end of the forum, if the candidates and those seeking answers would move out to that lobby area, that would be wonderful because we'll have another candidates' forum immediately after this for the mayoral candidates. And at this time, we'll start with the opening statements from the candidates. As I said, we're going to go in a round robin type of format, so we'll start the first one with Mr. Bryan.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon. My name is Jake Bryan. I work at Rockwell Collins, and I'm running for city council because I believe that if you want to actually be the change, if you want things to change, you have to be the change. And I think for far too long, we have done things the same way, whereas we could do things other ways, more peaceful ways and less coercive ways. In particular, I find zoning laws to be outdated. I think people have enough decency and common courtesy to go and talk to their neighbors and be able to work out, hey, I want to change something to my property. Do you want to talk about those changes? See what we can do to minimize the impact, if any, on your property. I don't think there's any more need for a bureaucratic board to decide these things for people, you know? They have these things called housing associations, which also enforce those things, especially in residential areas. But in commercial areas, I don't think it's permanent. I think people are grown up enough. I think society has advanced enough that we don't need those things. I also believe taxes have gone out, just outrageous, and we keep on spinning into insanity. And I think we need to, the best government is the government that does the least, and so if I become a city council member, I will hopefully make the government do a lot less than it does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. And for that to mention, in the interest of time, please withhold applause until the very end. Thank you.
First of all, I'd, just hold on. First of all, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing the candidate forum tonight. My name is Dennis Norton, a citizen of Hiawatha for 38 years and a current city council member for my first term of office. My wife Linda and I have been married almost 50 years. We have two children, four grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren. The priorities that establish the foundation of who I am are God, family, and work. I retired from Rockwell Collins after 38 years, working primarily in the finance and program office areas of employment. My positions were cost account manager, manager, program planning and control, and principal project manager. My civic experience includes a board member of planning and zoning committee, advisory board member of Hiawatha Rag Ride 2015, and a charter member of St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton, previously serving as finance committee and co-chair. My efforts this past term of office has been to learn about the intricacies of city government, apply my previous work experience to the new role of councilman, and get to know the city hall personnel and my fellow council members, and learn from them this team that understands city government. I believe my efforts have been somewhat fulfilled, but there is much more to learn and would be honored again to serve another term of office. I will expand on my city government knowledge, therefore striving to make the right decisions for the citizens of Hiawatha. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Olson.
Yes, good evening. Thank you all for joining us tonight, and a special thanks to the League of Women Voters for arranging this forum. I would also like to thank all the candidates for their interest in running for the mayor's office or the city council. In the recent past, it wasn't necessary to have this kind of forum, simply because candidates ran unopposed. This forum clearly demonstrates a renewed interest in becoming a part of Hiawatha city government. I invite anyone in the audience who shares an interest in being involved in the exciting growth of Hiawatha to submit a letter of interest to the mayor or consider being a candidate in the next election two years from now. We are always looking for committed citizens to serve on the city's various boards and committees. My name is Dick Olson. I'm honored to have served Hiawatha for 15 years, to include the last 12 years as a city councilman. I'm also a founding member of the Hiawatha Economic Development Corporation. Head Co is a 12-member board of Hiawatha business owners, committed to Hiawatha's continued economic growth. During my 15 years of community service, Hiawatha has experienced unprecedented economic growth, benefiting all city stakeholders. The current mayor and city council are passionate, committed, and dedicated in their collaborative pursuit of fiscally responsible Hiawatha growth initiatives. We have made significant progress in making Hiawatha the best place in the metro area to raise a family and grow a business. However, like always, there's still much work to be done. I'm running for a fourth city council term because I firmly believe our best days are ahead of us. My wife Rita and I have lived in Hiawatha for over 17 years. Five years ago, we built our corporate office and distribution center building on Progress Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Ms. Wickendall.
Okay. My name's Amy Wickendall, and I want to also thank the League of Women Voters and all of you for coming out on a rainy night tonight. I want to tell a little bit of a story about how I came to Hiawatha. About seven years ago, I was living in Marion and came home one afternoon to find out that there was a notice from my property management to basically leave, you know, 30 days, get out, you know, no warning, no reason, always paid my rent. I had never had a complaint against me. But yeah, they decided to uproot me for no real reason. I found out later it was to make the apartment a pet-free place. So I moved to Hiawatha, bought a condo so that nobody could take my home away from me again. And how this kind of ties in is I've grown concerned over the last few years about how our city is growing. And I believe that we've come to step on too many toes. We've told local businesses, basically straight up, that you're not welcome here. We've made past zoning ordinances that have closed existing businesses, forcibly relocated local businesses, and that concerns me. You know, I believe that we should strive for growth for all, cooperative growth, and that's the real reason why I'm running here is because I want to make a community that welcomes both all residents and all businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will move to the question and answer portion of the forum. Candidates will each have one minute to answer the question, and for this, we'll start with Mr. Norton. And the first question may have been partially answered by your opening statements. What do you see as the three top issues facing Hiawatha, and how do you plan to deal with them?
I think the first issue is to continue our efforts on town center out here, revamping our intersection out here, and I think getting the proper funding to make that happen is the right way to go approach that. The second is continue to get economic development, bringing businesses on in, and I think an answer to that would be supporting Head Co and getting their support in here, and also getting individuals in the community to be involved in their, as citizens of Hiawatha, and be part of the solution.
Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Yes, I also believe that the number one priority, and the number one priority that I will continue to advocate for is public safety. And as part of that public safety advocacy, we will continue to invest in the Hiawatha Police Department, the Hiawatha Fire Department, ambulance service, and also our arterial system. You have seen a tremendous amount of work being done, primarily as a result of securing RISE grants. We've been able to develop primarily Center Point Road, Stanley Road, and some of the other roads. We have received over $2.5 million in RISE grants, and we will continue to pursue those kinds of fiscally responsible initiatives.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
The three main issues I see for the city of Hiawatha over the coming years, growth is the main concern. How we grow is important. We need to make sure that we're not going in a rush of development for development's sake. We need to make sure that we're working to accommodate the needs of all residents and small business owners, and to make sure that if we are developing new land, that we're not just pushing the people out who are already there. Our second growth, or our second area of concern is property taxes. It's very concerning that we have the highest property taxes in all of Lynn County. Going to go ahead and look for a way to go ahead and scale that back, divest from our property holdings. And third, I think, green energy growth. In the next 10 years, alternative energy is going to explode through all facets of American life, and I think that's something that we need to be ready for.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
My three areas where I see where we need to go, in particular for growth, we need to eliminate all zoning laws. I think it is a tremendous burden upon businesses to go through the whole process. It's highly inefficient, and a better way to go forward is to actually talk to adjoining property owners. And I actually have an idea called peaceful property cooperation. Basically, you own this piece of land, you send a notice to all the adjoining property owners, you meet with them, you discuss the changes you're going to make. They give you input so to reduce any impact that you might have on the property value and go forward with a civil contract that way rather than involving the government. We also need to reduce property taxes, and that's what I've seen going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, both candidates have addressed some of the questions that are coming up with respect to community growth and with respect to safety. The first question I have relates to community growth or development. How do you feel about TIF, tax increment financing, and what impact, whether it's positive or negative, does it have in Hiawatha? We'll start this question with Mr. Olson.
Yes, thank you. TIF, or tax increment financing, is a tremendous, tremendous economic developer tool. And I'm pleased to say that in the last 12 years that I've been on the council, and actually years before then, Hiawatha is held by Spear Financial as a model for the use of TIF. One of the things that we do, unlike our neighbors to the south, who tend to do the 10-year, 100% deal, we primarily do five years, 75%. We have, in the last five years, have had 28 tax increment financing projects. 25 of those have been for 75 to 80% and for four to five years or less. That's very fiscally responsible use of TIF.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on this, to be honest with you. Like I said, I believe, did I just turn it off? I may have turned that off. I believe kind of when we look at taxes, when we look at growth, we should always look at value for our money. Are we getting what we put out for it? Our, I know our, we, we have a, I'm not going to talk here. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryan.
All right, it's not working. Can you hear me? All right, awesome. Well, I think TIF is, I think it's enforced, I think it's being used in a manner where corporations, okay, thank you, in a manner where corporations, okay, he's looking, okay, cool, in a manner where corporations make contracts with the cities saying that, hey, we're going to have this many employees coming over this amount of time. There's no actual enforcement mechanism for that. I believe we should just reduce taxes for everyone, especially the business owners. I think a good method to do that would also be to have property owners actually negotiate with the local town what should be the property taxes and discuss how much they actually bring in. I've noticed this in Switzerland. They actually determine the amount of taxes they'll pay ahead of time, in particular if they use the service a lot more. For instance, GoDaddy uses the ambulance service a lot more than other businesses. Okay, so my time's over. Thank you.
I've been a big supporter of TIF in my tenure here as councilman. I think I've been involved in eight TIF. Again, what Dick was saying was five years, 75%. I'm a big supporter of TIF. I think it brings in, assists the businesses throughout Hiawatha. They look forward to it when they come into the meeting. They're very courteous, and they ask for our support, and we as Hiawatha councilmen support them big time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question also relates to development or business. It's how do you plan to increase quality retail options in our city? And is there any connection to Cedar Rapids? Would that be part of your plan? And we'll start with Ms. Wickendall.
For quality retail businesses, I believe what we need are kind of more of your kind of smaller strip mall areas. One thing that I'm really concerned about, because we do have kind of on our southern border of Cedar Rapids, right across from Walmart, that is what I would think that most developers prime land for people who want to develop. I don't want to see people be pushed out of their house for someone to develop like a megamall or some other kind of really large shopping area. I would rather see small businesses, like I said, in the kind of, to have these strip mall areas for that, or buildings that people would be able to go ahead and set up shop and develop their own businesses, as opposed to trying to give away corporate subsidies to bring in big box stores.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I don't think it's the government's job to increase the amount of business that's in the area. What I think the government's job is, is to provide an environment for which people to operate, which is easy, efficient, and affordable for people to actually come in. And I think that if we provide such an environment by getting rid of zoning laws entirely and reducing the tax burden on local businesses, I think that'll be the best way to bring in retail businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Norton.
Yeah, I'm real excited about bringing small business, retail business into Hiawatha as we revamp Hiawatha and continue to make it grow, given the assistance to them. It will be great to see as we go down north Center Point Road, small retail businesses thriving to make Hiawatha grow, including their employees. So that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, we have had a dream and scheme at City Hall for a number of years, going back to, I believe, at least 20 years ago, to develop a town center, if you will. And the town center will incorporate small business. Actually, it'll be a mixed-use situation, where we'll have living accommodations, we'll have restaurants, entertainment kinds of venues, and those kinds of things that people need. And the beauty of what we're doing, quite frankly, is that some of the TIF situations that we've been involved in, bringing primarily the automobile dealerships out and also the hospital, that's going to bring in a lot of traffic into Hiawatha, and I mean that in the best of sense. What we don't have is something that'll keep them here. We need the restaurants, we need the small businesses, we need the small retailers, and we will get those. Thank you.
The next question has to do with safety, which apparently is of concern too. Do you feel that our police resources are substantial enough to handle our huge growth, including addressing violent crime? And we'll begin with Mr. Bryan.
To address the violent crime, I think the best way to defend yourself is owning a gun and being able to use it effectively and in a responsible manner. Having the police come in is a good option, but you know, when seconds counts, police are minutes away, and it's not their fault, you know, they can't be everywhere at once. It's easier to carry a Glock 19 than it is to carry a police officer. And I think going forward, I think a good solution would be to allow private businesses to, to, what's it called? Sorry. To employ private policing force, private police force, you know, for the local business district, so they can effectively have a better police presence, you know, rather than just making it where we have the city government that puts all these police members over in the business district while neglecting the residential district.
Thank you. Mr. Norton.
As it is now, I believe the current chief of police and his staff do support Hiawatha, but as we continue to grow, there is no question about it, we need to assess the number of police officers to support us. As an example, going to the Northwest Territory. Any expansion will require safety, and part of that, of course, is the police department and the support of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, I think I made it very clear in my opening comments that I am 110% supportive of public safety. That will always be the council's number one priority. And in terms of the police department itself, I was fortunate to be involved in the first five-year police department plan. I initiated that and did the draft. When I first joined the council, the police department, the officers didn't even have shotguns. So we have come a long way in the last 12 years. In fact, we have a $4 million general budget, general expenses. 26% of that, or over a million dollars, is being spent on the police department. And we will continue to do that, and we will continue to fund the police department to the highest degree possible for the safety of all residents and businesses.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
With respect to our police officers, I think that we have a very good police staff to serve and protect the community of Hiawatha. Obviously, as we grow and our needs grow, we may need to accommodate that growth as well. My only main concern recently, especially in the light of recent events that happen throughout the nation, whether it be respect to Baltimore or Ferguson, is we want to make sure that our police department adequately, and basically they are called to serve and protect, to make sure that they are protecting the constitutional rights of our citizens, and to make sure that we're not using any kind of the Defense Department's kind of military plans or militarization. That is a big concern of mine. I don't believe our police force should ever need to be militarized. And like I said, and always, we want to protect against potential lawsuits if in the event that, you know, demographics change and policing changes. So we want to, we will grow with it, and we will always stand with our police, but we want to make sure that they're to serve and protect. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question kind of follows up with some of the responses. This is again, development. What do you foresee as the center of Hiawatha by the city hall? What do you foresee it looking like in the future? And we'll start with Mr. Norton.
A while back, we had had a meeting with all the councilmen, and one of the questions was that, and I would sure like to see my vision would like animals of Iowa as an example. Any of the small towns where you come out and you've got all the various retail businesses, you can walk down the sidewalk, pop into a store, a retail store, grab a bite, eat, whatever the case may be, and definitely looking forward to a community that has buildings that look like, again, a small-town USA type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, in terms of the town center. Yes, in terms of the town center, first things first. I have seen many cities and have been around the world, and it's just unbelievable how often the businesses are built with disregard for the arterial system. In other words, the businesses are there, but they don't have the streets to handle them. First things first in Hiawatha, that is the redesign of the Emmons and Center Point Road intersection. We want to do that, and we will do that, and we budgeted to do that primarily for safety reasons. We have a lot of motorists that go through there, we have pedestrians, and we also have bicyclists who use the adjacent trail. So that's the first thing we're going to do. That's on the boards. You've already seen some of the work that's being done out there, and we'll get that intersection corrected so that buses can go through there, semis can go through there, pedestrians, et cetera.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
With respect to, well, at least this building anyway, in terms of the future, I would like us to implement rooftop solar as a part of our energy strategy. One of the reasons is, we have this building, it's a great building, it's going to serve us for the next fifty years. The city pays the taxes on the electric bill, we can implement some kind of solar to that building, and then, which will pay for itself after about a three-to-five-year period, saving the city money. As far as the growth of the downtown, I would like to see, I think Dick was right, I think we do need to implement some kind of streets to make it a little bit, make the flow of traffic a little easier. But I would also like to see a lot of our existing businesses still be here five to ten years from now and not have to relocate or move out of the area entirely to accommodate that growth.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I agree. We probably do need to make some changes when it comes to the intersection, but the way it's going about to make those changes is wrong and immoral, in particular to the eminent domain and the theft, I would say theft, of the local pubs here. Eminent domain's supposed to be used for public use, but when this goes back into private hands, it's basically a corporate-government collusion interaction. So I believe that is wrong. I don't think we should be doing that. I think if we want to make that place a better place, you know, for it to look, to look a lot better, I think we need to talk to the pubs. I think we need to, you know, try to strategize work with them, work with them, rather than just forcefully evicting them off their land. And that's what I see going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question has to do with water runoff, including coming out of basements because of sun pumps. Would you be willing to vote for a program to map the watershed in Hiawatha and make plans to improve water runoff? And we'll start this with Mr. Olson.
That's a very simple question. Yes.
Yes, I would also support that. I think the reason why is we all experienced what happened in two thousand and eight. Being able to plan for the watershed helps us and helps us avoid disaster down the road.
And before we continue, I have a request that the candidates hold the mic a little bit closer. Thank you. Mr. Bryan.
Yes.
Same with me, yes. You know.
That was quick. All right, the next question, back to finance, I guess. Is Hiawatha fiscally strong and prepared for an expanding future? And we'll start this one with Ms. Wickendall.
Well, yeah, I do think that we are strong, and just go out on me again. I might have. I am, you know, I can bellow with the best of them. Okay. Does it, is that working now?
Testing.
No, I think we are fiscally strong. I know, I was looking at the budget recently, we have a million dollars in cash reserves. We do have assets in terms of property that we have acquired. The tools are all there to be strong and develop growth over the next coming decade. What really is a matter of question is how we go about implementing that growth. Are we going to go ahead and continue to increase property taxes for things? Are we going to go ahead and continue to purchase land and not development? I think that is where, kind of where the questions that are coming up lies. We have, we have all the tools in the box. We just maybe need to make sure that we're not saddling our residents with new taxes to make that growth happen while ignoring other streams that we have in ways of revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I don't believe we're being fiscally responsible enough right now as it is. Currently, we do have a million in cash reserves, but that's going to be used for the fire department, which we have on the referendum for this November. I don't think we're in a financial situation so where we should be doing bond, issuing bonds to pay for that. I think we should just pay for the thing outright, but the problem is, we made a lot of risky real estate ventures, which the city really doesn't need to do, especially when it comes to developing a certain area. You can ask a developer to come in, maybe give them a TIF or something to that nature to, you know, to build up with a vision with the city to do that, but I don't think going out there and, you know, buying up all these properties and trying to do that thing is feasible, method to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
I believe Hiawatha is fiscally strong. We are top-notch in the sphere. I think Dick had mentioned that before too. Other communities look at Hiawatha as an excellent, excellent, fiscally-strong city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, there's absolutely, and I just wanted to reinforce that and state that again for the audience, there's absolutely no question that Hiawatha is unbelievably fiscally sound. We do have, in fact, a one-point, almost one-point-five-million-dollar reserve, and we have, the council has been very conscientious in building up that reserve over the last five years, and we will continue to do that. And let me just make a real clear and very strong point about how strong we are. We, according to Moody's, we have an A1 bond rating. Now, what does that mean? That means when we go out to sell bonds, we get the best possible interest rate. We almost get free money. Our last bond was one-point-seven percent interest. That's unbelievable. If I could borrow that kind of money at that interest rate for my business, I'd be tripling my business tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Okay, the next question has to do with younger residents, and one of the factors indicating how involved people are is perhaps attending candidate's forums like this. So how would you plan to get younger residents more involved in the community, including elections and just participation? And we'll start this with Mr. Bryan.
Well, I'm an Eagle Scout. I currently am in the scouting organization. I'm in Troop Seven Six Six. I'm also advancement cheerleader for Three Rivers District. I would, you know, make it more of an open place, more of a transparent place as well, because, you know, a lot of the information is not there online currently at our website. I think part of the process is, well, half of the process is knowing what's going on, and it's so hard to find out. You come to city council meetings and you get this meeting notes and nothing gets discussed in the meeting. Everything's decided ahead of time of what's going to happen, who's going to vote for what. And sometimes there is some good debate, but very rarely. And I think the biggest problem is bringing this discussion out into the open, bringing it to the forums, having more government data online freely available.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Norton.
Yeah, I had that question as well when I first came onboard as a councilman, is how to get younger folks involved. A lot of the meetings that we have here, when we get individuals, we do not see the younger folks come onboard. So we've struggled with that for some time, and then I think back after I have asked that question, and I say to myself, did I do it when I was younger? Like I said, I've lived here in Hiawatha for thirty-eight years, and prior to being on the council, was I actively involved? No, I was not. So it becomes a challenge for everybody, and it really is back to the individual themselves to bring forward and step up and join in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, I'm incredibly encouraged, actually, by the turnout tonight. Typically, our council meetings, for those of you who do not attend, and quite frankly, there are many, Dan in the back is usually our sole audience member, and to me, that's a sad commentary. So I'm very happy to see this kind of turnout. And I too would very much like to see young people involved. I'm very, very encouraged to see Ms. Wickendall and Mr. Bryan running for council. I can tell you from my own personal experience, and I have tried to recruit young people to run as candidates, it's very, very difficult. Everybody has obligations, obligations with family, obligations with work, and this is not a walk in the park. It takes an awful lot of work, and it's not just council work. It's a lot of hours after council work. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
Oh, I still like to think of myself as a young person, though my son would probably beg to differ. I think a lot of times when it comes to younger people in voting, I think a lot of times we have to kind of boil these larger issues down to the local stage. It's easy to go ahead and brush off city council is, you know, just one little thing and about zoning and this and that. But the fact is that we are not helped by sitting on the sidelines. My generation is proof of that. We're probably the most indebted generation that has ever existed, simply because we haven't participated in government to make our needs known. And to make that and try to build on that with people that I meet is one of my missions. I do think that Mr. Bryan is right. We do need to go ahead and be a little bit more transparent, open things up a little bit more on the internet, and I will always be on Facebook, I'll always be on, you know, my website, and I'll always have that information for people to be able to access.
Thank you. Our next question kind of continues the theme of diversity. What do you intend to do to get more women and people with different ethnic backgrounds to city government? And with this question, we start with Mr. Norton.
I think it's back to what we just talked about, trying to get people involved into the city government, doing what they can to help each other, help the citizens of Hiawatha, whether they're young people or bringing an ethnicity into it. It needs to happen, and we can't twist arms. We just have to make individuals feel comfortable and come in and joining the group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, we would very much like to have diversity on the council. We were blessed to have a couple of women on the council during the twelve years that I was on. They are no longer on the council. Nancy is here, and Linda Men Dixon, I don't know if she's here tonight or not. But in terms of ethnic diversity, it's very, very difficult, quite honestly, because Hiawatha is not a very ethnic-diverse city. I believe it's the last time we looked at the demographics, and Kim's back there, she could confirm this or not, but I think it's less than two percent in Hiawatha as a minority. So that's going to be very tough to do. But as far as having a woman's voice on the council, I would love to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Wickendall.
Yeah, again, I think it kind of boils down to, I shut it off again. Swear to God. Is that, I'm very good at that.
Just push it on the bottom, and the red light will come on.
Is that, okay. I'll try not to do that again, but just keep shutting that off. Again, tribute is still a civic virtue. I don't think it's much more different than owning a home. If you're going to take responsibility for your own home, your own property, being part of the city and the civic community, it should be a part of that, because I've always said that, you know, when you don't show up and vote, when you don't make your voice heard, it's a task of approval of the current administration. And if, you know, if they screw up, if they do something wrong, you have no one to blame, really, but yourself, because you didn't show up to make that difference.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
As many of you may know, I'm not actually from Iowa. I've lived in Alabama, I lived in Florida, I've lived in Texas, I've lived in Poland before. And to be quite honest, this is really a mono-ethnic area. You have a lot of people of Eastern, Western European descent in Central Europe. To get more people involved, I, you know, my generation, we really don't care about people's race or gender. We care about what people think and what they stand for. And I really think if people want to get involved, who are ethnically different, who are women, who are, you know, whatever, they should get involved. You know, there should be nothing holding you back. There are no, there are no limits to what you can do nowadays, you know? And I really think one of the concerns may be that a lot of ethnic minorities might feel disenfranchised. I know this coming from a historical background in Alabama, that the government has been a means of tyranny upon, you know, blacks in our community, and I think, I don't think we have a problem here with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. All right, switching gears a little bit, what are your priorities with regard to historic preservation in Hiawatha? We'll start with Mr. Olson.
Yes, we're kind of ahead of the power curve on that. We formed a history committee. I'm not sure who's here for, yes, Edith is here. Five years ago, maybe longer.
A little bit longer.
Yeah. But in any event, they are well on their way to preserving the history, and it's too bad we don't have a little bit more time. I turn the mic over to Edith, and she could tell you all of the tremendous work that, she might not take it, but all the tremendous work that that committee has done to preserve the history of Hiawatha. They're doing an unbelievably good job.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
Well, I mean, we're definitely a very young city. However, that doesn't mean that there hasn't been history made here, and we should make steps to preserve our history. I'm a big, I'm kind of a history nut when it comes to most anything. I always want to know what happened when, why did this happen, and how it has grown, and what changes kind of came upon it. So, yeah, we should take steps to preserve our history and to tell that to future generations who will reside here and come here. I know my still main concern is a lot of, we still do have some history down here across Emmons Road on Center Point Road with respect to some of our businesses. I would still, like I said, my main concern is to want to see some of those still continue.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I think in the techno, in the information age, I think the biggest part about preserving our history is to actually put it online and to make it in a manner where people can read it efficiently, that people who are archiving it can effectively, you know, put it online very, very easily. And also with respect to what Ms. Wickendall said, I think we need to not kick out businesses who have been here for a long time, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Yes, as Dick was saying, the history committee has been established, and I believe also they're doing a great job. It got a neighbor involved, Mr. Seifert. I don't know if Jerry's here tonight, but he's been actively involved in that as well. So it's doing a great job trying to ensure history of Hiawatha. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is about recreational facilities. Do you favor adding to Hiawatha's recreational facilities? And if so, what would you add? And we'll start this question with Ms. Wickendall.
I would like to see more entertainment options. I do miss the indoor soccer field, though I do love the trampoline park that went up. It's a great place to take the kid. Okay, anyway, yeah, I would love to see more things to do within this town with respect to kind of family, things to do for families and things to do for young children, whether it be related to sports, whether it be related to, you know, playgrounds and parks, basically any, you know, I'm always open to suggestions. I would like to see more recreation at the end of the day, so we can kind of stay within town instead of having to drive across line county.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I live right across from Guthridge Park, so I have a lot of recreation right there in front of me. So I would support, you know, alternative means to create more recreation, in particular parks. So for instance, we have a growing section of the city, in particular, the northwest section. So if they had that piece of land out there that they wanted to build on, I would suggest that they could completely fund it on their own, and they would reduce that in their taxes, because they've added to the city on top of that themselves, and they just give it back to the community. I think that would be a good means to do that. Also for recreation, if we, you know, provided a better environment for businesses to actually provide recreation for people, I think that would be a good option going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
We have a fantastic Parks Department, and the personnel within that department support a lot of different types of events and functions, but that's not to say that we don't need more, different types of family, family events, family get-together kinds of things that would happen within the community. I believe that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, I echo what Dennis said. We in fact have an outstanding Parks and Rec Department. In fact, so outstanding that the Cedar Rapids Parks and Rec Department recruited, if not stole, our Director of Parks. But in any event, we've got a terrific replacement, terrific staff. In terms of activities, I think we really do cover the gamut for families, and particularly with kids, we've got tremendous, I think Hiawatha Kids League has a metro-wide reputation. We have soccer, we have frisbee golf. Would I like to see a golf course here? Yes, possibly. Would I like to see a pool? Yes. There's just lots of opportunities ahead, and that's the beauty of growth. We're going to be able to do those kinds of things in the future.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Bryan, and it relates to the local minimum wage. What is your position on raising the minimum wage in Hiawatha as is being considered in Iowa City?
First of all, I want to give you a background of who I am and how I view economics. I think raising the minimum wage actually, sorry, raising the minimum wage disenfranchises people who may not have the necessary skills to get a higher-wage job, you know? You have people like my generation who have it, find it a hard time to actually get a job, because we've never had any experience, we can't start until we're 16, and then we're also legally bound to make a certain amount, which, you know, certain businesses might not seem viable for people to actually pay them, because quite frankly, they're not worth what the service they're providing. And I think raising the minimum wage does a disservice to businesses, it does a disservice to people, because people don't get that chance to actually be able to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
I do believe in raising the minimum wage, but I also know that there is an impact to small business that has to deal with that. But I believe they can, and they will, and therefore, that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, I certainly believe, as I'm sure most of the audience does, that everybody deserves a livable wage. In terms of being the vanguard on the council for increasing the minimum wage in Hiawatha, I would tread very lightly on that. I would definitely get a group of business owners together and have a discussion about that very thing. I think everybody here has read a great deal about what the negative impacts have been with increases in minimum wage. It can, quite frankly, close a business. It can close a small business, particularly a small restaurant, or those types of businesses. So I think that's something that we would need to get people involved, get businesses involved, before any kind of decision would be made.
Thank you, Ms. Wickendall.
Personally, I'm all in favor of raising the minimum wage. I personally don't believe that anyone who works 40 hours a week should have to live in poverty and have to work multiple jobs just to be broke. That all being said, this is something that we do need on a federal level or on a state level. Unfortunately, being a small community cannot enact it kind of directly without reaping some of the consequences, because we would have some restaurants and some other small businesses move back to Cedar Rapids. Like I said, I stand for all local businesses, I stand to try to develop local businesses, and like I said, in order for this to happen, for the minimum wage to occur, it has to happen at the federal or state level.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Norton. If we decrease TIP and reduce taxes, how will we pay for public services like the library, parks, or safety or police and fire departments?
Would you mind repeating the first part of that?
If we decrease TIP, tax incentive financing, and reduce taxes, how will we then pay for the public services?
It will be a challenge, no question about it. We would have to make sure that everybody understands that impact of that is, could be devastating, but we, I believe, would go deal with it. Thank you.
Mr. Olson.
Yes, there's been comments that have been made about Hiawatha having the highest tax levy in the metro area, and I'd like to put that into a little bit of perspective. The levy here, and this is per thousand, is 1540, and in Cedar Rapids, it's 1522. We're talking about an 18-cent differential on a $150,000 house. That amounts to $27 a year, or about $2 a month. We have to have those kinds of taxes to be able to support what we are providing. I would guess that there are a lot of people in Cedar Rapids who would be more than happy to pay $2 more a month to be able to have the kind of streets that Hiawatha has. We have an exceptional street system, we have exceptional services, and we're not going to back off those kinds of services. We're going to be working very diligently to increase them.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
What I believe, like I was trying to allude to earlier before I shut off the mic, was kind of a, to make sure value is what we get out of our tax system, to make sure when we look at what we're paying into it, to make sure that we're getting our money's worth. And I don't necessarily believe that that is currently the case. We, like I said, we do have higher property taxes, and we've also gone on a little bit of kind of spending binges to purchase real estate that the city has held, that has never been developed, that may never be developed at this current rate. And if one's just going to hold the property, why don't we just sell that off and then either return the investment from that back into the people, or to, you know, like I said, pay for some of these other things.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I personally believe paying any taxes on property that you own is egregious, because you have to work a certain amount, you know, because that's your property, you know? We died, our forefathers died for, you know, our life, liberty, and property, and to have to pay something, so whereas you couldn't go in another manner to get that service otherwise, I think is ridiculous. And I think the spending binge that has been going on as of recently is one of the key reasons why I think this could work. If we reduced the spending binge, we sell off those assets, I think we could reduce property taxes. I think we could reduce TIP, because quite frankly, the last two TIPs I saw was the dealership over there going to another dealership that previously evicted, what's it called? Evicted, oh, it left. And it's a, GoDaddy's already a pretty big business, it really doesn't need that much of a tax break to grow anymore, it's pretty huge.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. All right, the next question is, what do you consider to be the three or the top strength of Hiawatha, if you don't see three of them? But what are, what do you consider to be the strengths of Hiawatha? And we'll start with Mr. Olson.
Yes, I think the primary strength of Hiawatha is that the city council and the mayor are absolutely, I think I said that earlier, committed, passionate, and dedicated to every single hard-earned taxpayer dollar that goes into our general fund, is very much considered every time we spend virtually a single dollar. And as a result, we have an extremely strong financial base that we can use to do an awful lot of things. And in terms of the properties that we purchase, those purchases are all part of a smart growth plan that the city has. And we will continue to work with developers, we're already working with some who will be developing that property, and again, first things first, we've got to get the intersection completed.
Thank you. Ms. Wickendall.
As far as strengths for Hiawatha, for me, it's a great place to raise my son. I can't think of any other place that I would want him to grow up in currently. And as we kind of alluded to earlier, the parks are really good. So it's one of our passions to be, my passion with my son, to go out and play down at the parks and frisbee golf and all those other, all those other fun things. So those, I think, are, that is, I think, the strongest asset of Hiawatha, and that's a great place to have and raise a family.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
I think the three major strengths of our area, as Amy alluded to, is our parks. We have a great park system, we're right next to the Valley, Cedar Valley Nature Trail. I really love that trail. I walk all the way out to Robbins and farther, it's really amazing. And we have a great community, I think we do, and I think what makes our community, our city that so good is our people. And I think it's people like Billy, like Amy, and myself, who are standing up and quite frankly, are tired of the lack of accountability. And I think us bringing that to the table and bringing that forward into a public debate like this is a very good thing for this community.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
I also believe that the mayor and the city council that we have today care about the citizens of Hiawatha deeply. Their decisions that are made are made in terms of the citizens of Hiawatha. We have a strong financial that we talked earlier about. Hiawatha has a strong financial grounds by which we can move forward with. We've talked about the Parks Department. Hiawatha is just a great community. Living here 38 years supports that. I would not want to move into place else. Thank you.
Thank you, and this concludes the question-and-answer section of our debate. Thank you very much, the audience, for those intelligent questions. Now the candidates will each have two minutes for closing statement, and we will start closing statements then with Ms. Wickendall.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much for all coming out here tonight. One of the things I want to leave you with here, and what I want to impart with, is that we need to have kind of more voices within government, because we can see this on all levels, whether it be in the federal level, on the state level, where there has become a little bit of a stagnation in government. And ultimately, when a government itself stagnates and it doesn't believe that it can't be replaced or become to the will of its citizens, it ultimately starts running roughshod a little bit over them. It's time to go ahead and bring in new ideas and new changes to the city of Hiawatha, and that's what I'm running for, that's what I'm standing for, and on November 3rd, please go ahead and cast one of your votes for the city council for me, and I thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Hello, thank you again for coming out. It's great to see everyone. I think going forward, we as a society need to learn how to work together, and part of that is actually talking to your neighbors, figuring out who they are, what they stand for, and what are their concerns. And I think having a more voluntary society, a society that is based on peaceful cooperation among each other, rather than using the government as a means to an end, to enact your vision of society as a whole, is immoral, it's wrong, it's very, very wrong. And I think, I see that at all levels of society, and I think we can do so much better than that. The technology we have is amazing, we can cooperate so easily. I can go on meetup.com, meet random people and go hiking, it's awesome, you know? You can talk with and discuss so many great ideas with people, you know, why don't we have a system like that here in our local town? I'm an engineer, and part of my engineering process, part of the process I've been learning is called the Agile Method, so part of that is design thinking. So with design thinking, you go around, you talk about a certain goal, you have this problem, everyone comes to the table, we all put our ideas down, we all look at them, we all vote on which ones are good solutions for that. I think coming together as community, you know, maybe having that type of forum at an actual city council meeting would be a good idea, so we have more of a direct involvement with, you know, with our leaders and among each other. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Norton.
Again, I thank you everybody for coming tonight as well, and also like to thank the League of Women Voters for conducting this forum, appreciate that. As a citizen of Hiawatha, being elected to the city council this past four years, and witness the care and passion that the mayor and the city council have for Hiawatha, was very good to me as a new councilman coming in. Their decisions impacting the city and discussing everything that needed to be done, and they knew, and each decision is decided in terms of the people of Hiawatha, the citizens of Hiawatha. As Teddy Roosevelt stated some time back, the best thing you can do is the right thing, the next best thing is the wrong thing, and the worst thing you can do is nothing. And I believe our city council and mayor are continuing to move forward. Our accomplishments these past four years include actions such as voluntary annexation, Poison Road-Robins Road intersection upgrade, new zoning code developed and implemented using a citizens group doing the zoning code. We've also got a satellite fire station, as you're aware of, that's plans have been developed, the library expansion has been discussed, and we've got progress on the tower-terrace interchange that's moving forward. So during this next stage of my life, I have dreams and aspirations for Hiawatha as the next councilman. I believe the future for beautiful Hiawatha is bright, and I'd like to look forward to being part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yes, again, I thank everybody for coming out. I'm incredibly encouraged by this turnout, and my pledge is that I will continue to use my proven business and city council experience to diligently analyze all Hiawatha investment opportunities. All city council solutions will result in a maximum return on every hard-earned taxpayer dollar the city invests, while ensuring that our budget is balanced each and every year. I will continue to advocate for investments to upgrade our police department, our fire department, our ambulance service, and our arterial system, maintaining public safety as our number-one priority. Your council will continue to balance the budget each and every year, and that's going to be a challenge, folks, because we are facing the challenging headwinds of reduced commercial property tax with the new rollback that we're going to be experiencing. And fortunately, we are fiscally sound, as I said before, with a $1.5 million reserve. And we're also, quite honestly, looking at likely decreases in federal and state spending. My pledge, as always, is to listen, learn, and lead. My pledge is to listen to our citizens, learn about all the issues, and lead in the continued economic growth of this great city. I thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lynn County, I would like to thank the Hiawatha Community Center for hosting this event. I would like to especially thank I would like to especially thank you, the audience, for your informed questions, for being active voters, and I hope that you continue that process by voting either at the satellite voting facility, which will be tomorrow, at either LAD or Downtown Library from 1:00 to 7:00, or on November 3rd. And then I would like to thank our four candidates for giving up their time this evening in what is sometimes a painless process, for being able to present their views clearly to you. So please join me in thanking them.